Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. And we'll do roll call. Jessica Crosby.
Here.
Emily McGonigal.
Here.
Tina Sather.
Here.
Joanne Smith.
Here.
Toni Corby.
Here.
Bruce Rabeling.
Here.
Roxanne Schoestead-Dietz.
Here.
Kevin Grover.
Here.
Mitch Erickson.
Here.
Okay, we'll now do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And I would like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passed. I forgot to ask if there was any changes, but sorry, Kevin.
Can I ask one quick question? Just on number three. What's CFC UK?
Okay. If you recall, we had, I think this is going dead. I can use this one, I'll get it. When we have our cyber issue.
Yep.
Okay, one of the people we worked with was, and again through our attorney in that group, was a group overseas.
Oh, gotcha.
That's the only way we could pay them. Stace could comment more on it, but that's what that wire transfer is.
Okay. I actually recognize the company, I'm like, what?
Yeah, no, and someone else ahead of time asked the question, and I should have answered it if I would have thought about it. So.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. We are now at open forum. So, we have Elk Student of the Month for April.
Ezra. Come on up. Do this first, and if you want to just stand. All righty. Ezra McGonigal is one of the Elk's Lodge 1599 Students of the Month for April. Ezra is the son of Emily and Dan McGonigal. Ezra seized the opportunity to gain college credits by taking two years of college English, two years of college history, and college intro to nursing class. He also prepared himself by taking physics, chemistry, Spanish one and two, to name a few. Ezra participated in football, track, basketball, golf while in high school, and is a leader in the activities that he participates in. As Rudolph said, Ezra is a student who paves his own way. He is not a follower, and he prides himself on that, as he should. His playful energy is a breath of fresh air in and out of the classroom. He gets along with just about anybody, and is very easygoing. He doesn't let things get to him, and can go with the flow. These things and his sometimes unconventional way of thinking will take him far in life, and very promising. As Hamra has said, Ezra McGonigal brings a humor, passion, creativity, and respect to each room he enters. He engages in any conversation with anyone at any time, and treats all people involved with respect, while challenging them to think of things from a new perspective. He truly gets along with anyone that he comes into contact with, is personable, and is always willing to help and encourage others, a skill that is undeveloped in many young people today. Anyone who knows Ezra will say that his warm personality makes him a pleasure to be around. Outside of school, he enjoys spending time with his girlfriend and being outside fishing, hunting, and swimming. He also enjoys family time during the holidays. Ezra plans to go to Minneapolis Community and Technical College for two years, and then transfer to the U of M. Ezra McGonigal, Elk Student of the Month for April. Autumn Davenport is one of the Elk's Lodge 1599 Students of the Month for May. Autumn is the daughter of Danielle and Rob Davenport. Autumn has graduated from high school, having seized the opportunity to earn credits in most of the college and school courses. Two years of college English, two years of college math, two years of history, and also intro to nursing. She supplemented the college courses with other courses such as sign language, band and choir, and other honors courses. Autumn is a member of Minnesota Honor Society, Koochicheng Area Prevention and Education Youth Group, and an active member of the International Falls Figure Skating Club. Miss Line is quoted saying, "Autumn has such a big heart. Selfless, caring, and hardworking are just a few ways to describe what a great student she is. Autumn consistently puts the best interests of others ahead of her own. She is a friend to all and offers a helping hand to any student or teacher in need. It has been a pleasure to have taught her and serve as her MHS advisor. She is going to do great things in her future, and I can't wait to hear all about them." Mr. Sandberg said, "I have had Autumn for several years, and she is a great person. She has all the qualities of a great student and a person. She is dedicated, trustworthy, honest, prepared, kind, and always is willing to put in the effort to succeed. She will be very successful in the next stages of her life." Outside of school, Autumn continues her passion for music by playing the piano and playing the guitar with her father. She enjoys board games with the family, camping, going on adventures, and exploring new things. Following graduation, Autumn will be attending Winona State University in the fall, with plans to major in cell and molecular biology through their pre-dental program. Autumn Davenport, Elk Student of the Month for May. So, next. First of all, Mr. Iverson sends his apology for not being here. It was supposed to be done last month, and he was looking forward to it, so anyway. I'm gonna start. National Merit Scholarship Program is determined which of the 1,600 semifinalists named in September met all the requirements to advance to this prestigious final standing in the competition. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. Each year, high school students enter the program by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. All finalists are considered for the National Merit Scholarship Award to be offered in 2023. Ellen Mendels, after qualifying as a semifinalist, has since met several requirements to advance to the finalist standing. She now has the opportunity to continue in the competition for approximately 7,500 National Merit Scholarships to be offered this spring. Very rare. I can't say that we've never had, but I'm not aware of two, let's put it that way, if any. So, we're recognizing you, and congratulations.
Good job.
All right, we'll resume the meeting. And the next, we don't have any other public open forum, do we?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, the next is the consent agenda. So, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Couple comments. We got number three. Number 16, just thanking Lori for her service. And again, I don't know.
I think your, is your mic working?
No.
Okay, there it is.
It's on.
I'll try and speak closer, thank you, get closer. Thank Lori for her service. She is taking another position, and again mainly what she says due to pay and benefits, and we'll talk a little more later. But same thing with number 19, thank Mr. Mason. We do have that position posted, as you're aware. There are a couple applicants at this point, I don't know what the closing date is, but the plan is to have interviews and a recommendation to you for the main meeting, so that the person has roughly six weeks. Hopefully, to get on, you know, that, well, if everything works right, we're gonna offer a position, and hopefully they can turn in a notice if they have to somewhere, that type of thing. We may call a special meeting, depending on how things work out, because typically, I would tell someone not to resign their position until the board's hired them. But on the other hand, we'll just see how it goes here. So, we're in the process. And like I say, the other thing I was gonna mention, we're hiring some coaches there. Football, there is only three on the agenda here. I had, I had to say Coach Edistad is aware where we're at, we're looking at other options, but we're not putting the fourth on, it may or may not go. And so, more to come on that in the near future. Other than that, a bunch of policies that have very minor revisions and adjustments, and so there's a pile of them. Other than that, any questions if there are?
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We go to action items. Number one, under the concept of improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome. We first will look at the resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations. I'll find it here in just a second. I think I will find it in a second, I thought I had it.
Did you copy your handoff?
Yeah, I thought you gave it to me.
Hang on, hang on, this is, no, this is even this. That's the first, and then this is gonna be the second, and then the third.
Okay. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, whereas International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states, "The school board may accept a gift grant or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools ISD 361 accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. May I have a motion?" Okay, and.
Second.
A second, okay. And the following. PCA Bronco Hall of Fame, $1,500. FES Starbase Trip, $6,000. And FES Vending Machine Books, $2,500. Bronco Football Boosters, New Jerseys and Pants, $4,950. Under prom donations, from Helen Swenson, $500. Cynthia Evans, $50. All-Season Equipment, $150. And PCA, $1,000. Under prom gift donations, VIP, from VIP Salon, Blue Shampoo Kit, Shea Shea Sweatshirt, T-shirt, Hat, Dairy Queen, 150 Mini Blizzard Coupons, Ekman Chevrolet Backpack and Sweatshirt, AA Bookkeeping Up North Survival Kits, McDonald's Popcorn Gift Basket with T-shirt and Cup, Northern Options for Women to Gift Bags, KGHS, KSDM, Four Moose Mountain Nickelodeon Passes. There. Under arena sponsorship for 2022-23, Beyond Esthetics, $500. Border Bank, $1,000. Border Boxes, $250. Chocolate Moles, $500. Coca-Cola, $1,000. County Market, $1,000. Ekman Chevrolet, $500. Falls Lumber, $1,000. Midco, $500. Minnesota Power, $1,000. PCA, $2,000. Radi Lake Medical Center, $500. Shannon's, $500. Super Wand, $1,500. TruStar Federal Credit Union, $1,000. Up North Builders, $1,500. We had a lot of donations and gifts, didn't we? That was really nice. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. And now, we go to resolution number, or resolution under 1B, which is relating to the non-renewal of the teaching contract of Kyle Schmidt, a probationary teacher. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
No, you wanna read if you would, and then if you're specific.
Here it is. Okay. Okay. Introduce the following resolution, does that, the person who did?
Yeah, Toni did.
Okay. Whereas Kyle, and moved its adoption. Whereas Kyle Schmidt is a probationary teacher in ISD 361. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent District 361. pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision five, in the District Master Agreement, the teaching contract of Kyle Schmidt, a probationary teacher in Independent School District 361, shall be non-renewed at the end of 2022-23 school year effective June 2, 2023. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to the said teacher regarding the non-renewal of the teacher's teaching contract. And this, is there anything else we need to talk about before I do a roll call?
Okay, it was seconded by Bruce, so just so the boards are aware, Mr. Schmidt is probationary, and he's on what I'm gonna call variance or a waiver, he's not completely licensed, and I think it's in the health area. He's not entered a program, and so, we're in essence have to repost and open the position. So, that's where we're at, it is advertised, and he is aware, so if there's any questions.
Did she second that one?
I did, I seconded it, yes.
Jessica, not Bruce.
Oh, sorry, I thought, sorry.
No, Bruce was the first one.
Can he reapply then, if he wants to?
In what happens, though, is if you have a licensed person.
If you have someone that has the license, right.
Unless you have a good reason not, you know.
Right, right.
Someone, and that's just the way the tier licensure works now, is if you were enrolled in a program, like with, I'm just gonna pick them into your sink, called state or whatever, you don't have to reopen that. So, that's.
Because you're working like under a variance until he's licensed?
But what happens, and I'm just, you know, we have another instructor that is enrolled in a program, we don't have to, you know, could, they're probationary, if things weren't going well, but that's how, you know, someone's gonna invest the time and money getting a program, as long as they're doing, I'm just gonna say acceptable. And so, in this case, he didn't enroll, and I'm not gonna speak for him either.
Okay. Do, I do roll call, right? Okay, Jessica?
It's just, we have to recognize everyone, so.
Oh, okay.
Yay, your name.
Oh, yay.
Tina?
Yes.
Me? Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Emily?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
Okay. And so, that resolution passed, okay? Now, next, we're going to go to the number 1C under action items, which is the resolution proposing to place Alex Manasa on unrequested leave of absence at a .8180 FTE. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? No, I gotta read it. Someday I'll get all those. Okay. Okay. So, the following resolution was introduced and moved. Be it resolved by the School Board of ISD 361 as follows. It is proposed that Alex Manasa, .8180 FTE continuing contract tenured teacher of said district, be placed on unrequested leave of absence without payer fringe benefits at the end of 2022-23 school year effective June 2, 2023. Said action is taken in accordance with the District Master Agreement and pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 10, upon the grounds described in said statute and which are specifically as follows. Lack of pupils and financial limitations. Be it further resolved, that a notice of proposed placement on unrequested leave together with a copy of this resolution be forwarded to said teacher, and that an affidavit of the same be placed in Alex Manasa's personnel file with a copy of the notice and resolution.
Just so the boards are aware, we went through this grandstanding process, which is taking wherever your license and pushing the most senior, you know, positions to my seniority down. Alex did have an option to go to the ALC, which any licensed teacher can teach at. She chose she would rather not, we can't force, you know, like if it was a high school math position, she has to take it, you know, you don't get a chance to say no in that case, because you actually have to ask for a waiver, which anyone can get. So, she chose, you know, she wants a full-time position if something opens up in math, so she'll have rights for, I think it's five years. The .818 is her FTE, so it's not that she's coming for the other .18, that's her full-time equivalent. So, she's choosing to go out and hopefully win something opens, as it will, she'll be back in.
Okay.
At least that's my assumption.
Would you say, like, she turned down the ALC position, would that be in addition to the staff that's already there, or would that have also pushed them?
No, that's the grandstanding process, how then that person would have went somewhere else.
Just so I understand.
Yeah, and so, I don't know if dominoes is the right word, but it trickles down there. So, yeah, if she would have, then that staff member would have, and eventually someone would have either filled the position, because that's what would have probably happened. That's why we have an elementary position posted right now, because if she would have taken that, this person either would have pushed into the high school, and someone here went to the elementary, or she would have went to the elementary, and someone would have filled that position, and they wouldn't have posted her. So, it's, if that makes sense.
So, does she retain her tenured status for so long?
For five years.
Okay.
I think it's five years. And so, any, like, position that she's qualified to take.
Opens, she can take, okay.
She can take.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we have a roll call, both again. Joanne Smith?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Toni?
Yes.
Roxanne, yes?
Yes.
Bruce? Tina?
Yep.
Jessica?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passed, a resolution passed, okay. And now, we are going to look at our agenda again. Under the concept of implementing data-driven teaching practices and staff collaboration to increase student academic success. We have, under 2A, develop a policy committee of three board members to make recommendations for policy revisions to be brought to the board as a whole. May I have a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Joanne. Discussion?
And so, just so the boards are aware, there was a conversation over the last couple months to look at some of the coaching policies, which obviously only the two, just like the rest of the policies. But I guess my recommendation is if we're gonna start, you know, looking deeper as a group, we should have a assigned group. Now, everything still comes to the board, just kind of like doing contract negotiations. A chunk of the board goes and does it with the group, brings a recommendation, and that's how it would continue. So, the process would be to form, you know, if this is approved, it would then go on with the other list of committees that we have, which technically the board chair appoints, and that's how committees work in the school board. So, the question is here, pretty in favor of doing that. And my thought, and we can send whoever's on the committee, figure out a time where we'd say monthly, I'm thinking the first week of the month, so that then we could have, say, a week to, you know, look at things, make some recommendations, so it's ready at the end of the second week to go on the board agenda. And like I said, we would just get in the habit, the person that helps me, the redlining, and that would just have to have them ready, unless there's something specific we wanna look at. I did give everyone, all board members got a copy of some requested policies that they may handle, that deals with activities for the most part. I just made copies, not knowing who, you know, will be on the committee, and everyone can look at. I would think that would be a place for us to start, along with any other policies that NSBA has coming out on a monthly basis to update.
So, and just to clarify it for everybody, that the policies are on the agenda. There are set-up policies every month, and so, the board does have an opportunity to read through all of those policies anyway. But this committee is there to kind of look a little closer and have some more discussion about it as a group, and then bring it to Kevin to get the, to get that set up for the whole agenda with any, any recommendations.
And technically, the board, if so desired, can invite other people to participate. I did reach out. For the most part, I'm just gonna give what I found out with talking to three different people. Seems like most small schools don't, you know, for the most part. Most larger schools, well, one larger school I talked to on downtown City's area has a policy committee, and they actually have several teachers, several parents, you know, different groups that sit in, and they do it once a month, and they go through as a group. And so, it is open, if the board so desires, a committee meeting is open to the public. You know, and that's why I say it's best for us to pick a time and have a set date and time. But if we wanted, we could definitely extend an old branch, you know, and invite to the other groups that, you know, they all deal with.
For sure.
Our, our job of educator. Obviously, the board has the right to approve, you know, so that's what I found out.
Any other discussion on that?
I think we should definitely open it up.
Yeah, and I'm all in favor of.
I'm fine with that, I think it would help get it all into the community more where it belongs, because I, I've talked to coaches that have said they haven't been aware of them even to know what to follow, so.
And again, we'll start with policies. The handbook piece can come along, because I guess the handbook is technically not a policy, comes to the board, and I'll typically say, just like the high school handbook, the principal, mean, will get to us in June. Usually, June or July, we have a month to go through, and then it's approved in August. This one, I would say, should get to us by June, so it can be approved in July, because activities start by mid-October sometimes before our, before our board meeting.
Okay, and then, so, wait, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So, what I'll do is appoint three people from the board to be on the committee, so you guys can get ahold of me, I'm not gonna do that right now, but I'll do it soon, very soon.
I guess my thought is if, and again, it's your determination on who you want on, if you would maybe, you know, send an email or something, because then whoever it is, we can connect and set.
Set the date for it and time?
Yeah, yeah, and that would work, because everyone's schedules are different. You know, just, you know, took a time and hit the set.
Perfect. Okay, doc, sounds good. Now, let's see what's next here. Okay, we're now under committee reports. Mitch, do you have a report?
Why don't we just go on, because you want to.
Missy?
Our enrollment number is at 460, that's what we had last month. We will actually have a new student starting tomorrow from a neighboring school, but that'll be in next month's count, but just so you know. We just had our MTA pep fest on April 6, and that was lots of fun. It felt really good to be back in the gym, having a pep fest. We got a lot of good feedback, felt really good. Our MTA testing began April 11. We have spring concerts coming on April 26 for fifth and sixth grade. That's at 1:30 in the high school gym. And then, our kindergarten through fourth grade concerts are on May 5. And then, on May 4, in the evening, will be our first annual steam night, so you'll see more players coming on Facebook. And then, our fifth graders are getting ready for their Starbase field trip. That comes up in May, before the main, or May 16 through the 19th, so that's all I have. And then, also, we, if it's on Facebook, we have some new ads that we put out on Facebook for Falls Out and FHS, so if you haven't, take a peek at those, take a peek at those.
Okay, Mitch?
Sorry, I have a question on my homework. All right, so, crazy show tonight happened for 6th through 9th graders. It was really, it was really fun, and it was fantastic, and 110 kids attended that, it was really good.
What also kids set up is fun?
Yep, it was a lot of fun, there was the pool open, the gym was open, there was a bunch of games to do. It was, it was very successful. It went so well that Mrs. Blaski, Mrs. Latinsky came up with a great idea. We're gonna have a junior cave night for 4th through 6th graders, so we're gonna move down a couple grades, and that's gonna be May 10, from 5 to 7 P.M. Spring sports week is this week, it was a pajama day, but I didn't, I didn't wear my pajamas, sorry. But tomorrow's Class Color Day, and then we have. But tomorrow's class color day, and then we have pink, pink paratherm tomorrow. And then we have a jersey day, and then we're gonna end it with broccoli. So the pep fest will be on Wednesday at one thirty P.M. along with the academic excellence awards will be presented there as well. Student council applications are open for all sixth through twelfth graders. They are due to Mrs. Belaski on May first. Student council, executive board positions are open as well for tenth through twelfth graders who are in student council and also do May first, two. Coming up, student council and Cape, eleventh and twelfth graders will be going over to the elementary school to talk about Cape and student council for them to join next year. And that's gonna take place a little later in May, I believe, early May. And then for MHS, we had Egg My Yard was a great fundraiser. Students had a lot of fun delivering the eggs. So thank you to everyone who bought an egg basket. MHS is gonna have an awards banquet in May third at six P.M. And then MHS will also be voting on the incoming board. And then student council is going to be doing our spring cleanup. We have the highway out by Lilford. Two miles there, we'll be cleaning that up. And then we'll do a carry park cleanup as well.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Yes, Mark, thank you.
Okay, and Tim, do you have something?
Yep, I have. This is a report. I can maybe answer questions, but maybe can't too, so it's forewarned. Current enrollment is five hundred and eleven. It's up three from last month, down seven from a year ago at this time. As mentioned, spring, well, spring sports are underway. Finding it hard to find fields, courses, and tracks that are snow-free. Track has went, I think, a couple of times to Bemidji. But, and baseball might have went today. Softball was canceled, but yeah, it's struggling to get going. But very soon, it'll be, I'm gonna say four days a week.
No worse than all.
Yeah, so anyway, MCA testing is underway and will continue the next few weeks. They mentioned spring sports week. Pep fest was mentioned at one thirty on Wednesday. Middle-level planning team is continuing to meet, and they should be meeting this Wednesday to finalize the furniture request. And so that is what he asked for a report, anything I can answer or pass on for questions.
I have a question. What's going on with the whole middle school being at the, I mean, is there something that we need to?
Not, I mean, the, the whole concept, they started, again, I think, as was mentioned before. It came out, the idea came out of the strategic planning process. And so they spent a fair amount of time figuring out what they would like, you know, and discussing. There was some time spent where they were trying to plan it. They'll do the building here, not gonna work. So it's gonna go to the West End area. There's no reason, I guess from my standpoint, that, you know, it's a, it's a structural piece. I'm a hundred percent behind it. I've been to a couple of meetings. I'm not gonna, I've not participated in the majority of it. That's something Tim and a committee of his staff has taken on. The group is, you know, there's, there's pros and cons. Teachers are gonna go in and out. Kids will move a little bit, obviously, for Fayette. We have one gym, they're gonna go down. Music, I think they're going, but for the most part, they're gonna try living sixth through eighth in that area. They're even gonna start, I think, with drop, dropping the bus or busing kids, dropping them off there. They're gonna have breakfast in like where the study hall is now. Lunch, they will need to go to the cafeteria. But for the most part, they're trying to make a middle school-type environment. Is it gonna take a little growing? Yeah, there's gonna be things that work and, and, you know, but the teachers are committed. And like I said, teachers are gonna come and go, which is doable. And, you know, and so like I say, not, not meant to, you know, it's just meant to separate a little more than we have. Will they still ride bus altogether? Yeah, we can't, you know, we can't go that far. But, and I'm sure there'll be tweaks, you know, things that we have.
Of course. I'm glad to hear it's moving forward. I just didn't know if there was something more they were waiting for, or?
No, like I say, it's, it's, it's just getting the planning and then fitting. And now, like I said, the, the schedule's getting pulled together. Meaning because like I say, even though they think they know who's teaching what, once in a while, we run into a dilemma with the, with the puzzle together for schedule where, you know, maybe I don't get seventh grade or whatever. You know, I'm just using that as an example. But, so that'll be hopefully finished in the near future. So everything will be set before school goes out. Try and get people moved as much as we can. But there is gonna be some movement of people. And then there's some people that are gonna be mobile for, you know. Most teachers end up with, you know, let's just say, five out of six or four out of six, where they're with that lower group. So they would come out for an hour or two. Or vice versa, I might be four out of six with the older kids. So those people will be housed, you know, outside of West End. And then they'll go in for the hour or two that they have the younger kids.
So then they just work with the bus garage on the routes and stuff and the?
Well, well, routes, I mean, they're gonna circle back and they're gonna go back to picking up behind the school, is my understanding.
Good.
And we're gonna make it work. And like I say, and have pickup as much as we can if they're riders, either out back or here. But we're gonna try and be as, one of the problems with kids crossing the street in front of buses out back.
Yes.
We're gonna try and avoid that as much as we can. It should be a little better because we're working with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade kids compared to, you know.
Second, yeah.
Yeah. So, but that's the plan. And like I say, we'll adjust as needed.
Okay, let's see, that was Tim. Okay, Kevin, do you have a report?
Just a few things. And Missy touched on it. And I just wanted to put a thank you out to Missy, Seth, as well as, is it Sunni? Is that how I say it then?
Sunny.
Sun?
I think it's Sunny.
Sunny, okay. That he worked with us and worked with them for the most part. And have two videos that came out today highlighting some of the activities, putting information out there. And we will keep pushing them for a while. And again, it has, you know, it's more PR. It has enrollment, yeah, information at the end. And people ask, is it in, is it going after the end? No, it's, it's just trying to be out there like the neighboring districts are putting out. And, and so thank you. I think they're very well done, to be honest. Now, keep in mind, in a minute and a half, there's only so much you can put. There's a lot of, to showcase everything that's done is tough, you know. And so they're very well done, and thank you. And so I have a copy of the most recent survey. It was shared with you from Nexus. And again, I just, I put a copy. There's nothing to be done with it tonight. But it's more complete than the rough draft. So again, if anyone wants to look through, if you have any comments, it's getting close to being in what I'm gonna say is a final version. So if you want to look through and have any, hey, this, you know, doesn't ring right, or, you know, please reach out because I think within a week and a half or two weeks, it goes to print, so to speak. So I would say very soon, sooner rather than later, if you wanna look through it. And if you have any, any titles or any major issues, let me know, and I would convey with them. As far as the reductions, just so you're aware, April twenty-seventh, we have a Steinway person coming to look at our piano for the appraisal. And recommendation will come shortly after.
Oh, that's for an appraisal?
It's to give us a value, so that we can then put it out on what I'm gonna say, the open market. Comes, he's actually a person that's tuned it in the past. It's been kept up very, in, in his mind very well. Comes, he's actually coming to the area. He comes about once a month, which I suppose there's enough people with pianos and stuff. So to be honest with you, it's a hundred and twenty dollars for the appraisal. And then we pay a share of the mileage, depending on how many. So it's, I mean, fairly realistic, you know, I thought for a price. Once we get that, then it will come to you to, you know, how, how do you want me to move forward? Whether it's, you know, putting it just out on Facebook, do we put an ad, you know, certain places? You know, and like he said, it's, he'll give us a value, the, what he can come up with, with comparables from the area. Because he said, you know, what, what this exact same panel in California might sell for a different price than it does in Minnesota. And he said, that's just a reality. But he'll do his best to give us comparables. And then, like you say, whether we set a price, whether we take bids, you know, that's something we'll have to think about. But anyway, it's moving forward. And I'm guessing by early May, we'll have a value, value to bring forth too. I met with Ted Brokaw and the city last week, just to keep you in. It was not part of the recommendation of meeting or anything. Their, their attorney's working on getting us a land use agreement, trying to keep it very simple. Bill and Jen Erickson and Michelle, everybody we met last week, they're working on getting some stuff set as far as how it works on our end, as far as registration and where, where the money's gonna go for different groups and things like that. So the process is rolling, same thing. It's gonna come very quickly. And there's gonna be some growing pains here and there. But the city is aware, we need to make sure by the end of June, you know, we're in a place, and again, Ted didn't think there'd be any issue. Of course, the attorney wasn't there saying, you know, saying she would have. But the main thing, like I said, we have insurance to cover, but it's laying out what we're using and making sure. It's just a good working arrangement. So that's that. And the other thing, like I said, I'm working on some creative ideas with activities to come up with the twenty thousand. That'll be coming to you as well as with the transportation piece. So any questions right now?
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Beth, do you have a community ad report?
Sorry, one other thing. Forgot. And, and I've talked with a couple of you. Oh, sorry, thank you. We've lost some people, and you're aware of that, to different places. And we've talked about we had to close me as far as negotiations. I, I recommended at least to one board member that I think a group needs to get together or we need to find someone that looks somewhat at like a pay equity for different positions here and in the region. The city can look in Friday's paper, Saturday newspaper, whatever you call it, has another opening that I sure hope we don't lose another person to. But again, it's at a rate higher than we're paying. And I guess I'm just open that I think, and again, I would be part of it. And we can look at whether we have someone external or we do it as a group. But the problem is if I take on, obviously, I have a conflict when it comes to business office, not so much with, you know, five, ten, or the, the other groups. But I'm open to a conversation. There's no board action here. But I think we need to look, you know, and try and, and compare to what, what the going rate is for different positions right now. Either that, and again, I know we have no money. But on the other hand.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I mean, I, I'm all for equity. You know, we should be looking at equity all the time in the market. But where's the money gonna come from?
But then, like I say, we either accept then having second-string quarterbacks, so to speak. And, and again, we have great people. Or we have to figure out a different way, like I say, of, do we have to have less and, and as you said before, do more with less?
More with less.
You know, good people or starting quarterbacks, or however you wanna, you know, phrase it. But I struggle, especially with some of the positions, you know, just like I said, we're gonna have to look at bus drivers. Neighboring ads in the paper, twenty-seven dollars an hour right now. We're at twenty-two fifty-one. You can't afford, we can't afford to lose four bus drivers. We won't have. And I don't know what we do then. You know, then we gotta start running two routes, you know, double routes and having kids here at seven-thirty or something. You know, get creative because we just don't have the driver. You know, and it's a piece, yeah, we don't have the money. But I'm afraid you're gonna, gonna lose some. I don't wanna call the bluff of the group that came and said, we'd like you to consider something different, you know, and I gave you guys that piece of paper. Not saying we can do all of it, but paid for one, I think we're not gonna get them all, you know, at least somewhat. And not just, like I said, all positions, because if we're out of line, and like I said, COVID's done some of it. You know, things went a little wacko if, gosh, you know, I surveyed more than they did before.
Okay, so at this point, we probably should hear from people and say, what do you think? I think I hear Jessica saying, we don't have any money. So what are we gonna do? Does, are there any more comments here? Because, yeah, we're either gonna lose some staff or we're gonna lose some money. I don't know what to do.
Or cut something else.
Cut more, but we couldn't even cut any more out of the budget that was brought to us last.
Totally agree.
And if you do an equity assessment, you have to do all.
Yes.
Administrative, teacher, parent, everybody.
Yeah.
You can do it in a cycle, but you have to do them all, yeah.
Right, but, and yet we have a timeframe. Because currently, we are in having the, the paper that we got from the, what was it, bus drivers or custodians? And so we're kind of looking at a timeframe here. So I guess maybe the first question I would have is, what are you thinking about timeframe? If we had a committee, when, when would we have to have decisions made?
Well, can I maybe, I wonder if it's, we certainly could do this as a committee, as a small group of us. But I wonder if there, it would be more planful and strategic to maybe reach out to see if other schools have done a project like this before? Because we're not the only school district in this, in this boat. And, you know, I think that there, there could be some value of looking at this for us. But then how do we get this information up to a larger piece so that maybe we can actually get some funding or start that ball rolling at a state level?
Which is part of what the committee could do. Is that what you're saying?
I think, I think if we, if we could connect with somebody that maybe is better suited to making these equity suggestions, you know, rather than just a small group of us.
Right, but I mean, are you saying we form a committee and start doing some of those recommendations? Not do the recommendations, then set up a committee?
Yeah, I guess I, I'm saying is, you know, is reaching out to some of our neighboring school districts, whether it's, you know, the Virginia area or, you know, whoever would be comparable and is there somebody that's doing this?
The only thing I can say is, is I spoke, we have a Thursday meeting with Superstate Region. I'm gonna call it the Arrowhead Region. And, and I threw the question out there. And of course, I'm gonna say a colleague in that area said, yeah, we look and we look constantly, but they're looking at what they call the Quad City area because they're competing with each other. You know, and now, like they said, whether what they pay, should it drive what we do or not? I, I don't know. I'm just throwing, that's what they said. The Grand Rapids person, it wasn't the soup that I talked to over there, said typically they're paying a little more than Deer River. And it just happens with their system that they feel they can pay a little more, you know. And, and now again, not saying we can't reach out to a group in the cities and see what custodians are paid, but.
That's gonna be way.
Right.
And that's what I'm getting at, is I think we can see, because that's who we've looked at in the past. I mean, I've gotten contracts, just like I did with five, ten, for that group of what are some other places paying those positions.
Right, we've seen dollars, miles.
But it also is, what's the going rate locally? You know, it is gonna drive a piece of it. The tough part with certain positions, custodian, you can probably say is comparable to a custodian. And I'm just not, boilerman, probably comparable to other boilermen. Some positions are, some aren't, you know.
However, I, I still, it just keeps bugging me that we, we have to decide when we have to. If, if we start a committee and we just keep looking, and at what point do we need to make a decision?
I, I think where you, where you go is you look and you prioritize, that would be my take, you know. And again, when I say prioritize, I don't mean in any good or bad way. Teachers are settled for two years.
Right.
Okay.
So we prioritize dates.
Well, we do need to look at that. The administration is settled for two years. So those might be ones, you know, again, need to be looked at and so on. But we have at-wills open, we have five, ten open, and we have parents that are open. To me, those would be the three to start with. And like I said, to start, I can get pieces. But again, it takes a group looking at, or it takes a group of someone, you know.
Okay, but the.
If you want someone else to come in and give advice, or look out and reach and see, you know, want someone that has more knowledge maybe than, than some of us on certain positions. You know, and I'm just thinking like, I don't know if our auditors or a group like that that works with enough business, you know, offices would have a person that would do something like that for minimal fee. It's a piece because one thing that is gonna be tough is every district does things slightly differently. You know, and we've talked about that in the past, where, you know, you have a combination Mars slash attendance secretary. You have Mars being done in the business office. You have, you know, just everyone does it slightly different.
But, okay, but are we prepared to, if we come up with some conclusions in terms of pay needing to be changed, then are we prepared to provide the dollars for that? Or are we just gonna do this and then say, well, we don't have the money?
I, I guess at least from my standpoint, at least you have the information and you can make a decision and do. I mean, if there's a plan on doing nothing. I mean, if there's this plan on doing nothing whatsoever, then there's no sense looking at it. But I think we at least have to have the information and take it and see what we can do. Or there's no sense doing it. I mean, if no one wants to look at it whatsoever, we don't care what, you know, if we're underpaying, you know, I guess we need to make that statement.
No, it definitely needs to be looked at.
It should always be looked at.
Yeah, well, and I think we need to do more research or, and get some more, you know, information from all these different angles and look at what was their process for doing it? If they were in the same financial position that we were and go from there. And kind of see, does, yeah, does somebody else have the same situation? And did they develop something that we could use as a template even?
So I'm gonna speak out a little bit, I'm gonna speak for, speak for something.
Will you give that mic to her, please?
No, I don't need to.
I would, if, are we being recorded?
Yeah, we're, we're on.
I think.
You need to have a company come in and do it for you because we simply don't have the human resource, knowledge, and base to do it. And a lot of pay equity is based on job description and job responsibility levels. And if you don't know what your job responsibility levels are and how to grade those, like a pay grade, you really can't determine what your pay equity is. And we don't have that. So to form a, I'm not speaking against funding committee, but to have, if you don't have that background, you're gonna spin your wheels and you're gonna make it worse. And you're not gonna be able to determine that, what's equitable across the board based on job descriptions and workload level.
But that also costs money.
It also costs money.
But I'm, I'm also in favor of an outside party coming in. Because if we're gonna open up this Pandora's box, it's a pretty serious move.
It is, yes.
You know, so, so I, I don't want, I would rather us not be the ones trying to figure out this puzzle.
And that's what I, that's exactly what I'm saying, Stacy, is I feel like if you open it up and you don't have that professional pay banding piece, it becomes subjective, it becomes emotional, and it becomes kind of a, a mess.
Okay, so what would it entail, Stacy, to do that?
Cause the other part of that is, is going forward, once you do that pay equity, you are establishing how you place all your positions going forward. So I'm not gonna get into, like, you know, and Kevin and I have had that conversation of where you put your activities director, and I got some questions. So you need, it, it will solve in the future, not solve, it will help direct and guide where future positions, when we add them, get placed and you will have a plan. Yes, but if you're not interested in putting the money behind, because that's why where the county's done it now in the city, and we're starting to lay behind and that is part of the driver. Now, the difference is the county and city can generate revenue to pay for those wages. So you're right, it is a concern, it's a huge concern of mine, now we can afford it. But yet, you're gonna have to figure out what you're gonna, you gotta know what you're dealing with.
Well, so let's find out how much it costs to get a company. Because am I willing to pay, you know, maybe up to, I don't even know how much, 5,000 or something? Maybe? I'm not gonna, I'm not, I would never be in favor of spending $20,000 on a consulting company.
But the flip side, if we don't, I'm afraid we're gonna lose and continue to lose. And, and that's, that's a gamble too. You know, you, you say, you lose your whole business office, you're in a bad spot. You know, or you lose your whole custodial or your whole bus driver, you know, type, we're in a bad spot, so I mean.
Could we get that moving? Could we get the ball rolling on someone? Stacy, would you know how to start the phone call and say?
You've gotta put a request for proposal together and get it out? I have no idea, not, not been known.
We'll get an RFP.
You'll get it?
Well, we'll, we'll get it out and see what comes in, you know, and get the process rolling. Because I think, you know, there's definitely, in my mind, how would I say it? It's easier to collect, and, and I'm just gonna say on the teacher's side. We can get any contract we want in compare, and not saying we're the same as Little Fork or whatever, but those contracts are, you know, in a paracan, a little more easy comparison. It's different when you get into some of the other, like I say, you're holding the bucket and what personality does here is not the same as what personality does.
Right, everybody has responsibility differences in different districts. So we need to have someone that's knowledgeable in that. So do we need a motion to ask you to do that?
No, because again, we can put out just like posting a position. I can post a position, board's the one that can hire, okay? So we will put this together, get some language and get it posted. And hopefully be able to bring something to you. And of course, you're the one that entered into a contract with a group. You know, and if it comes back where it's 50,000, that's a different question. And again, the board has to approve, so we will be.
Is this, do we know, is this the reason why the bus driver on here resigned is?
No, that, that person took a job, you know, somewhere else that no longer is able to drive.
Thank you.
And might, might have still be honorless to do some, if, if it was.
Fill in if needed?
Schedule or extracurricular.
Okay.
Further discussion on this? Okay, what did you say?
No, we don't, we don't have.
Okay, I thought you were asking someone. Okey dokey, so. That sounds like a good plan. Kevin, do you have any more for yours?
Nope, nope.
Beth, okay, and Beth, Beth, yeah.
Community Ed has been holding on your own classes and we have another one coming in May. And a babysitting class coming up, they were all very popular. The biggest thing that I started was, I started going through the community ed bylaws and making sure they're in line with the statute and revamping those, that will finish up in May. Myself and Janessa, Lassie attended a grant workshop through the Minnesota Community Education Association. It was really, really good, it was online, and so we decided to do the, it's a two-part. And we decided to sign up and next, in the next week, we will attend the second session of it. Mitchell talked about Cape. I just wanna say that, that youth night that we had here was wonderful. We had great volunteers, we had great staff. It was, it was great and exhausting and.
I bet.
We had law enforcement also stuck in and it was just a, it was a very great night. And that is, we've been going into the fourth and fifth grade classrooms and doing curriculum and just helping the decision-making skills. And so that was one of the reasons why we wanted to open up to the fourth through sixth graders. We're trying to get that sixth grade twice. They seem to really want it and need it and, and it's a fun night. Community Ed and Cape are providing a responsible beverage server training in early May. And we are offering to businesses to go into their business if they can't come.
Good idea.
I know a couple of them, we've offered outside of town here. And Pals is going great, Amy was doing a wonderful job. She's coming up with some different activities. One is we're gonna do a memorial barbecue out back. We're trying to use the school more, we're trying not to do so much stuff off-site. Like we did a Easter craft and Easter egg hunt, and we did it here in the school. And it was so fun to see some of the participants. We used Heidi Thompson's room, which is down the lane, and that was their own classroom. And they were so excited to go back into their own classroom. So that was a really good night. And of course, we have our Pals prom coming in early June. And she's busy, the Elks, we'll hold out Elks and Angela's busy preparing for that. That's always a very big, big night. So we also, Mitchell talked about Cary Park. We will be planning a community cleanup there. The pool remains busy, we, it's gonna be kind of a rocky April in May, cause all my life creates play spring sports. But they are, tonight Josh Woolley, their, their track night was canceled, so he came in, he's like, yeah, I can work. So we opened it up. So, but every, the community and everybody's been really, really good with that. And we do have a survey opened up right now. Cape and Community Ed collaborated through the DFC grant. We have a, an evaluator, and so we're just piggybacking off that. We're doing a, a community survey right now. So that will close on Friday, that went out on the face, on our Facebook. And we sent it out on email, we'll do a little push tomorrow and Wednesday.
What are you surveying?
We're surveying, for, through the community ed part, what people wanna see.
Oh, that's a good idea.
And through Cape, it's basically the same thing. We're doing a community survey, trying to see what people want, what they're seeing. And so hopefully we get some good data out of that.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a community ed advisory board, anything else?
We just met this last, was it last week?
Yep.
And we were talking about like the bylaws and the policies, just kind of bringing them back. I know Steve Early was going to drop off some paperwork just to go through and kind of get back on some sort of board. Now Jessica and Joanne, are you the other two that are on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, okay, but 11 doesn't work for you, okay. So, and Janessa did really good at just sharing the, the meeting minutes and stuff, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I got them, yep.
Okay, perfect. I think you are on the email list as well.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, thanks. And rec commission, do we have anything?
We'll have a meeting on Wednesdays.
Wednesday, okay, okay. And now, I'm gonna get my paperwork here. Sorry for taking so long, I gotta get this going here. We.
You have the one or did you leave it?
I've. Oh, wait, here it is, no wonder, okay. There we go. Oh, God.
We enter into closed session now?
Well, it's, she has a.
Just let her read.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is to review, is a review of legal developments in a pending employee grievance. VMS case number 23-PA-1274 with school district legal counsel. The open meeting law allows a meeting to be closed based upon the attorney-client privilege pursuant to Minnesota statute, section 13D.05 subdivision 3B. The school board needs to meet with its attorney in a confidential setting to obtain advice regarding its legal positions and strategies in these proceedings. Pursuant to the law I've cited, I will entertain a motion that this meeting now be closed for the purposes stated. May I have a motion?
I'll move.
Jessica, second?
Second.
Bruce, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.